Folks speak and rejoined her as well. This, too, is a procedural issue. And it goes to what you just mentioned, Ms. Sheehan, which is that you had asked for enforcement from the then-Building Commissioner via, I think, three separate letters. One dated April 6, 2021, one dated May 13, 2021, and one dated June 29, 2021. Does that sound right?
Yes.
Okay. So we know that under Chapter 40A, Section 7, the Building Inspector has 14 days to act on a request for zoning enforcement, and that's in your paperwork, as it should be. And so I look at the last of those three dates, which is June 29, I think I said.
Yes.
And at that point, if you have not filed an application for enforcement before the applicable board, in this case, our board, if you continue to maintain with the ZBA as the proper form, you've got to get that over to us within 30 days. You've missed the filing deadline. You've missed your statute of limitations on this case. Now, again, I'm not looking for reasons to evade getting to the merits. And I want to say for the record that the allegations that you and Ms. Sheehan are presenting are extremely serious. And I think anybody reading through these submissions, looking at the photographs, would have to have a certain level of concern. And we know in this day and age, climate change and environmental issues are very much in the forefront of everybody's mind and in the political arena. So I guess the one thing that I take objection to is that this board would ever look for an excuse to evade getting to the merits on an issue where the issue is probably before us. I think that you've got a general bylaw issue in this case, which calls into question whether you're at the proper form here at the ZBA. And if we acknowledge that there is a zoning issue, that you are at the proper form, it appears as if you've missed the statute of limitations.
No, no, Mr. Chairman, I expressly disagree.
That's state law. That's not local law.
I understand. The previous letters were not identical to the letter that we filed on June 29, the request for enforcement asking for six specific sites. The other ones were much more general. They weren't specific. Plus the fact that there was no response to either one, to any one of them. So therefore, there is nothing, there is no actual response, which is a separate issue. Now, we have to, so where there's no response at all, where the statute mandates that the Building Commissioner respond, he must respond, he shall respond according to the statute, he didn't, no response.
He has 14 days to respond. I agree with you.
And he must, and he ordered, and he's mandated to respond. We have no response. So that's, that's a defect right there, that he has not responded. So therefore, we did a very focused, specific request on June 29, which was not the same as the other ones, and that, and so that is properly before this board for consideration.
Most respectfully, Section 15 of Chapter 40A requires that you get before us on a zoning issue, assuming this is in fact a zoning issue, within 30 days of the expiration of that 14 days that the state law, Chapter 40A, gives to the Building Commissioner. Now, I grant you that there was no response to any of those letters. That's not a good thing, and Carver can't be proud of that. But some of that might have been because there was a lot of turnover in the office. For whatever reason, there was no response. That triggers the 30-day period. That's Section 15 under 40A. Now, you're shaking your head, but I can read it to you. I don't want to do that, but you know it as well as I do.
I know that's what it says, but it's a catch 22. He doesn't respond at all. He's mandated to respond, he doesn't respond, doesn't respond. So he do a focused demand for enforcement, and he still doesn't respond. So we file within 30 days of that, of that response. So where we have no active response from which to appeal, there were, where there's no active, actual response from which to appeal, then we have another appeal period.
And that appeal period would have begun on June 30?
No, it would not. He received it on July 1.
Okay.
The appeal period is 30 days from July 1.
Okay. And what would that have taken you to? July 30, right?
30 days.
From July 1 is July 30.
No, no.
Or July, is it one day?
He has 14 days to respond, and it's 30 days from the expiration of the 14 days to respond.
You'd still be on the timeframe.
No.
Yes?
No, excuse me, Mr. Chairman, no. We've calculated this very carefully. Under Chapter 7, he has 14 days to respond. He received the demand on July 1. So, and then the appeal is 30 days from the expiration of the 14 days. And you calculated, you calculated out to the day it was filed on time. So it's on the 30 days of the 30 days.
When was this case filed?
This case was filed on August 16.
No, it wasn't. It was filed on September 2. And you know why? Because you folks didn't file your filing fee with it. Your application was not perfected. It wasn't perfected until the filing fee came in. And I have an application here that's dated September 2 from you folks. So with all due respect, I think you have a very challenging procedural problem in this case on both of these points. And I'll be quiet and let the rest of the board know. Mr. Barrington, do you have anything to say?
I have nothing at this moment.
Ms. Miller.
This permitting department stamp of August 16 enclosed the following with the appeal to the zoning board of appeals. That doesn't count, Charver?
No.
It wasn't paid?
No, it wasn't paid. That's what I just said. It wasn't paid. It wasn't paid until September 2.
Okay.
Thank you. Ms. Clark.
There was, there's a lot of sloppy work in this. You know, the letter dated June 29 was sent to Robert Francis. Robert Francis left the position in December of 2020. And Mr. Banda started on January 5 of this year, and he left the position in September, I think it was, or August. So a letter that is sent to, it was sent to the position, and I did track down through our planner, if a letter is sent to Bob Francis, did Jim Banda pick it up? And he said, yes, he would have looked at it somewhere along the lines. But both, part-timers, 19 hours. I was told that he investigated it by the town planner and decided to take no action. But I'm gathering that he did not convey that information to you.
No.
No, okay.
And if I may respond regarding the filing of fee, the reason it was delayed in filing is because the assessor's office was calculating the fee for the butters list, and I was asked, and I personally came here and was asked to wait until that was calculated before paying the filing fee.
And there's nothing in the, in the instructions, in the zoning board of appeals instructions for an application such as this specifying any, any, any kind of fee.
I thought you'd ask again. You've had no correspondence with our full-time Building Commissioner at all?
We filed the zoning, the enforcement request, that letter that you had.
Yeah, he wasn't here then.
Well, we, well, Ms. Sheehan.
Have you spoken to, I mean, one of the issues is you're asking the zoning board to make our zoning enforcement officer enforce the earth removal committee's special permit. As I, one of your complaints was that you had no enforcement from the zoning enforcement officer. So I'm asking, we have a full-time Building Commissioner since around the 1st of August. Have you had a conversation? Pick up the phone.
I have picked up the phone many times and called many people. I have received no responses.
Have you talked to Mr. Uche? That's what I'm asking. I didn't ask him.
No, I'm not aware of the revolving door at the Building Commissioner's office. I'm sorry. I have filed some things in writing and in emails, and if this was such a serious matter, it's quite incomprehensible as to why no one has responded to our written requests, including the earth removal committee.
Mr. Porah. So it's, for both of you feel mere legal opinion that this issue should be before this board, yes?
Yes.
So we did reach out to town council, and we asked for her to take a look at this and to give us her opinion. And she addressed some of the things that have been mentioned previously, but her final statement is, "In my opinion, without indication of the earth removal committee, that AD Makepeace is somehow in violation of their permit, there is little opportunity for the zoning board of appeals to challenge the use or enforce a permit issued pursuant to the general bylaws and not the zoning bylaw." So town council feels differently than the both of you.
To be clear, we're not asking you to enforce the earth removal permit. We are asking you to enforce your zoning bylaws that prohibit commercial activity on residential land. Someone may claim that it's under a permit, but in plain view, this land is being used for a commercial operation.
And your claim is that this falls under a zoning bylaw, and everything I've heard so far says that it falls under a zoning bylaw.
Well, I will point out that three of the projects, three of the sites, have no earth removal permit. So you cannot rely on that excuse for those three sites.
Where zoning bylaw, zoning bylaw has, has a table of uses, anything not permitted is prohibited. Earth removal is permitted in the RA district only with approval of the earth removal committee.
Through which general bylaws?
Well, however, however, yes, that would be through a general bylaw. But I think there is no.
And I think we're going circular now. This is the same argument that we've been making.
Yes, but for those three sites where there is no, you can't enforce the earth removal committee permit before the earth removal committee, because there is none. So the only recourse is this board.
Go back to something before I get to Mr. Casey for a minute that Ms. Clark mentioned, which is conversations. Assuming that there are three mining operations that are ongoing without proper permitting, without any permitting at all, have you thought about speaking to the earth removal committee about these three specific operations and saying, "Look, issue your permit or not, but we need some action taken on this so that we can move forward and decide what we want to do?"
I'd like to clarify that the three sites where no earth removal occurred, most of the work is already done there. We're pointing those out to you because it shows how AD Makepeace has been skirting and evading the earth removal permits and conducting commercial mining on agricultural land without permits.
Yeah, and I appreciate that, and I think that's all well said, and it's articulate, but it's not the point that I'm trying to make or the question that I was trying to ask, which is, has this operation of AD Makepeace, as alleged, with regard to these three particular sites, been discussed by anybody from Pine Barrens and Earth Removal?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
At meetings and in personal conversations with the former chair and the current chair.
And I note that there's nothing in your submission specific about any action that might have been taken by the earth removal committee, any votes with regard to this. Can you help me with that?
Sure. There have been no votes. Mr. Garrison, when he was first informed as a chair of these activities, his, his action was to call up Jim Kane and let him know that Jim's understanding of the earth removal bylaw was wrong, and that, yes, he did have to pay earth removal fees for sand and gravel taken off his property, even if he was selling it to other Cranberry Bog owners. That's recorded in a video of the meeting. So yes, there have been discussions.
Do you have that video here?
It's on Facebook. I'd be happy to send it to you.
I don't have Facebook.
I'd be happy to send it to you. And it's on our YouTube channel as well. So those are the kinds of conversations that we have had, and those are the kinds of responses that the earth removal committee has provided in response to what you call very serious allegations.
These are very serious allegations, yes.
And photographs and testimony, live testimony from people like myself. I'm an attorney with 38 years of practice in environmental law. I formally worked at the Attorney General's Office enforcing environmental laws. I am not making this up, and neither is our expert, Mr. Patrick Garner, who himself is, has 30 years' experience as a hydrologist, soil expert, and wetland scientist.
Thank you for that, Ms. Sheehan. Mr. Casey, on the issue of proper jurisdiction and filing deadlines, anything that you want to add or inquire about?
Yeah, just a quick thought. The Pine Barrens. When this came about, the newspapers months ago kind of hurt my interest because I've had knowledge of three largest pine barrens in our area. It was only because I was a fisherman and a member of the beyond forces. As you probably know, one of the largest areas of pine barrens is down on the military, down on Cape Cod. Second one is over here, right next to the camp. That's a, okay? Ah, no, right over here, in Plymouth. Yeah. I used to fish over there on one of the small ponds over there. And the third one is down on the other end. And they're very unusual sites, and most people don't even know what they are. They walk through them with a doggone and so forth and so on. So I wonder what, what the inference would be when one of our officers sees paperwork from you people. Is this part of what you're attempting to do as far as the excavation, to save this particular thing, like I've read about in the newspaper, or is it just in general?
Well, Save the Pine Barrens is a nonprofit membership organization whose mission is to protect, steward, and preserve the rare Atlantic coastal pine barrens forest, one of three on Earth that extends throughout southeastern Massachusetts and Cape Cod and part of the islands. So that is our mission, yes.
And because you're probably well aware of the fact, you're down on the military installation, they have bought these housing. On the other side of the house, housing units is full of pine barrens. But the problem is, the jet fuel that's been spilled over the years finds a way to get to the base of John's pond, and before it gets there, it goes through some of the pine barrens, some of the biggest on Cape Cod. And as a result, that water was polluted for, had to be over a year down there, the fish kills and everything else. But the waste bag, it transferred to the next pond, going to Australia. I'm just bringing this up. You know, it's, it's a unique subject. Not many people know what's going, you know, know what a pine barren is. Even when hunting down there years ago when I was a kid growing up and, you know, peasants and, you know, quail, they opened it up and do it. That was a great area for them, you know, like small bushes and white sand and so, yeah.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Casey. If I may respond to that point, yes, but pine barrens here in southeastern Mass are extremely rare, and they're very fragile. And they're characterized by large amounts of sand and gravel and by forests and soils that have built up over tens of thousands of years. And when we strip mine and remove the trees, clearcutting them, and remove the vegetation and the stumps, and take out millions of cubic yards of sand and gravel, we remove the protection of those soils and forests that they provide for our sole-source drinking water, Apofur, that all seven of the towns in this region rely on. So unregulated strip mining is threatening our groundwater supply, and we only have one. We all rely on the Plymouth Carver sole-source Apofur. And Carver participated in the sole-source Apofur committee findings, and one of the findings in that report is that unregulated strip mining threatens the water supply. So that's part of our mission and part of why we're here tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you both. You said it very articulately, and I think you've done your very best to answer all of our questions at this point. I see counsel standing in detention there in the center of the room. So if the two of you withdraw for a moment and allow him to sit at the table so he can have a mic, identify yourself and your relationship to this case. Thank you.
And I apologize for standing in detention in front of you. I must admit that I was concerned that we were meandering into substance before resolving the jurisdictional issue, and I was concerned about the notion of providing a forum for for argument that I don't think is supported by the facts. And I don't want to get into that either, because by making my point, I guess I'm bringing this in that direction. I do want to address the jurisdictional issue. I moreover want to say that.
Excuse me.
Oh, I'm sorry. Excuse me. Yes, Mike Crossen.
Crossen, okay.
Crossen. I'm a partner fully in Lawd here in Boston. I'm a resident of the team.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. Thank you all, by the way, for giving me the opportunity to speak to you this evening. I am grateful for the work you do and having this opportunity. I will say this.
You are here representing Makepeace, are you? Thank you.
One would think after 37 years myself of practicing law, I'd know enough to tell you that. Thank you very much. I'm counsel to AD Makepeace Company. Indeed, I have been counsel to Makepeace for about 20 years. This is unusual for an attorney, but I'm going to note that I am proud of that. I've enjoyed working for them. I wanted to make the point that if you were to move beyond the jurisdictional issue, I then would indeed request that this be moved, and I will tell you why to a different time, that is. And I'll tell you why it is unusual in a forum like this and in this context that the employees, the persons who work for a company outnumber the persons that come from various places around the Commonwealth to listen to the arguments of groups like Save the Pine Barrens. But they are here, and I'm sure they can't hear me, and I doubt that they could hear you folks. However, I believe that this issue ought to be resolved on the procedural issues. In complete candor, I don't even, I can't, they can't make a colorable argument to support their claims. And I want to address that for a moment, if I may.
Please.
And what I'd like to do first is address the second one you brought up, because it is incomprehensible to me that counsel would argue that the, two points, excuse me. One is that it is worse than what you characterized it as being, because what in fact they did by giving you three letters, including one in June, was they simply tried to bootstrap themselves forward to avoid the mistake they had made by not appealing to you after the first letter and after the failure reportedly to respond to that.
Or the second letter.
Or the second letter.
What about the third letter?
My point is, it is even worse, because the question of timing and point in time at which they should have appealed should be judged by the first letter.
Why do you say that?
Because it was the first, because according to the statute, as you correctly note, the Building Inspector has 14 days to respond at that time.
Doesn't the clock restart after a second letter is sent?
No, because they could, you know what they could do if that were the case? They could give you another letter tomorrow to cure the other defect. And the reality is, you simply can't do that. That is not how the law works. And I know you know that, by the way. I'm not trying to preach to you about the practice of law. That is one concern I have with respect to the lapse of time issue. The other point I would make is, it is utterly incomprehensible to me that folks who have been practicing law for as long as I have would say to you, "Well, we didn't know there was a filing fee." They did know there was a filing fee. There are always filing fees. You have to be able to pay for this to be published and to notice those persons were within the appropriate distance of the site. So that is, that's, that is an absolutely incomprehensible argument, if I may. I want to get now to the other point, which in truth I find really compelling. The, I find the both compelling. I am, I am more compelled by the first one. Let me just, to this, by this one, for this reason. The general bylaw makes it very clear that the committee with jurisdiction over earth removal is the earth removal committee. In fact, it states that enforcement of the earth removal bylaw is with the earth removal committee. They have argued to you that they should be able to come before this committee because it is a zoning issue, because it is referenced in the table of uses in the zoning bylaw. It is only referenced there as a cross-reference. I would note, by the way, it is in fact by a cross, that it is pointed that we are directed to where one would really look for jurisdiction over this issue, noting that in the residential agricultural district, that, that earth removal is allowed by right, provided that one has received an earth removal permit from the earth removal committee under the general bylaw. It is indisputable. Now, if, if you folks need more argument with respect to that issue, I'm more than happy to brief it along with, I presume, counsel to Save the Pine Barrens. But I do understand that your counsel has advised you, and that you have reached your own independent determinations with respect to this. I want to interrupt you there for a second. Excuse me, yes.
And most of the rest of us also for many years. It, it is sometimes the case that I will disagree with town council.
Of course.
So I don't march, and I want everybody to know this, I don't march in walkstep with what town council opines in every case.
I understand.
Okay? So if we get an opinion, we pay attention to it, we may be influenced by it or persuaded by it, or in my case anyway, sometimes not at all. Proceed.
I, I understand. I think that's right. To be perfectly candid, my clients disagree with me all the time. That having been said, I do believe that it is very clear where the jurisdiction lies on this particular issue. I don't even believe it is arguable to be perfectly candid.
So let me ask you this.
Yes, please.
The Pine Barrens folks, sincere as they are, express great frustration with the town, most especially the earth removal committee and predecessor building commissioners, trying to get their attention. They now come before the ZBA because they haven't gotten anybody to pay attention to them in these other, you know, in these other forums, whether it be the earth removal committee or some other committee, or the Building Commissioner's office, or the planning office. Nobody, they say, is paying any attention to them, despite what they feel is strong evidence that they have a key word. So now they're here. They're improperly here.
They are improperly here.
Where do they go?
Mr. Chairman, I have a couple.
Where do they go?
They should go back to the earth removal committee, or they should go to court. If they, if they believe that they have valid claims to pursue, they should take those either back to the jurisdictional committee in this town or go to court. The reality is that while they voiced their frustration, they, their frustration is a function of the committee determining that their claims are not accurate and made a determination that they were, they declined enforcement, the earth removal committee declined enforcement. It isn't that they didn't pay attention. It isn't that they didn't pay attention to it. They simply didn't agree with them. Therefore, yes, they may well have an appellate right. They may well be able to go to court. But this forum, the Zone Board of Appeals, is not that forum. I'm sorry.
Anything further?
I have nothing further. Thank you for your time.
Yes, and one rejoinder, please, and then we'll move on to public comment. First of all, counsel at the end suggested the same remedies that I mentioned to you in the beginning, which is you can go to court and apply for a temporary restraining order. Or you can go back to the Earth Removal Committee and the new building commissioner and have had it again. And if that doesn't work, back to court if that's what you're so inclined to do.
Of course, to apply for a temporary restraining order, you have to show that you exhausted all your administrative remedies.
And I think you-- I think you're suggesting that, aren't you?
No, no, I'm not suggesting that. First of all, with respect to the first point made that we should have appealed on the first letter. The first letter was very different than the January-- than the June 29th letter. The first letter was an omnibus letter. It wasn't specific at all. It just made a shotgun complaint about A.D. Makepeace and asked for cessation of all activities, whereas the June 29th letter was very specific, about six sites, about specific violations. So to say that the appeal should have been from the first letter, that's just in two different species, two different analysis. Secondly, how can we not know that there was a filing fee? That's very simple. How were we supposed to know that there's a filing fee? We looked carefully at all the instructions. There's nothing-- there's no regulation published that there was a filing fee. As a matter of fact, the filing fee isn't any specific number. It's calculated according to-- a complicated calculation according to the number of butters. So the filing fee wasn't ascertained until some later time. So-- and we paid the filing fee when we were told what it was. So secondly, the comment was made that they reference in the-- that there was a cross-reference in the zoning bylaw. Well, that's no argument at all. It's in the zoning bylaw. The argument that we're making about the violation of the use that's in the zoning bylaw. The fact that it cross-references to the Earth Removal Committee doesn't make-- doesn't divest this board of any jurisdiction. It doesn't detract one iota from the fact that this is a zoning violation.
Briefly. I wish this matter had been briefed. Mr. Aronimo is sitting here, and he can confirm to you that the Earth Removal Committee has not responded to our request for enforcement. They have not said that they are not going to do anything. They have talked and talked about procedures and policies and trying to improve their enforcement mechanisms. But counsel for Makepeace is absolutely wrong when he says that that's where our remedy is and that's where we should be going to and that we've been denied relief there. Again, there's been no action by the Earth Removal Committee except to go along with what I will only call a farce. And if you can look at three or four sets of plans from GAF Engineering that are included in my affidavit that I obtained on a public records request from this town in which A.D. Makepeace said it was going to build agricultural projects that are never built, in fact, even submitted the same plans twice in 2011 and 2017, showing cranberry bogs being built at the corner of Cranberry Road and Frederick Road in 2011, and those bogs aren't built, the permits are expired, and they are continuing to conduct earth removal activities. If you would like to ignore that, that is your choice. We would request, however, that you make a clear decision and take a vote as to whether you are denying or granting our request for enforcement.
Okay. Again, the use of the word ignore, I think, is a little bit over the top. We don't ignore cases that are properly before us. But what I'm hearing in this case a little bit is a bit like the previous case, which is at some point conversations were going on. At some point, those conversations stopped out of frustration. I don't know whether it was your side or to some degree the town's side, but there was a level of frustration. And I'm wondering now whether you folks would be willing to have a resumption of those conversations that were had earlier on some months ago, apparently, before these letters were sent out to the previous building commissioner. Is that something you'd be open to?
We are continuing to have conversations with various members and officials in the town. We've never ended any conversations but somewhere.
Okay, that's good to hear. And counsel for Makepeace, would you be willing to continue having discussions with, say, the Pine Barrens folks on the issue of how best to address their concerns?
I'm always willing to sit down and talk to Mr. Chairman.
Okay, but I see you're smirking a little, like you don't believe that's going to come to a--
No, that's not what I meant. He was-- he wanted to talk and I stopped him. That's what I was saying. We're more than happy--
So I see in their submissions that there were attempts to continue conversations with at least one Makepeace official, I think referred to by the CEO.
I have never had conversations with Mr. Kane. In fact, all he has done is smirch and slander my character.
All right, okay, all right. So at some point, somebody had some conversation with Mr. Kane. Is Mr. Kane here?
Yes, yes, I am, sir.
All right. I remember reading in the paperwork that there was a conversation that you had at some point to the folks on the Save the Pine Barrens side of things. And I don't know how far that conversation went or who it was with, but I'm suggesting again that maybe conversations should fire up again to see if there is any way that we can address the concerns that they bring to this board, not on the procedural issue, but they have concerns about mining going on on three sites that have not been permitted by the Earth Removal Committee. And they have concerns about three other sites where permits have been issued, but apparently mining is going on for non-agricultural purposes, which would not make them exempt. So again, without getting into procedural or jurisdictional issues, I'm asking you whether you'd be willing to have ongoing constructive and productive conversations with the folks on this side to see if you can arrive at an understanding and arrangement to address these concerns? Because I fear that regardless of what we do, this case is going to end up in court. And it's going to result not only in, I would assume, fairly substantial legal fees, because that's what attorneys do, is they charge by the hour. And this is going to be a complicated and lengthy case involving a lot of evidence-taking. And it's not going to be good for your company even from a public relations standpoint. So all the more reason to have these conversations. Are you willing to do that?
Sir, in order to have useful conversations, both parties have to be operating in good faith. We will operate in good faith.
Thank you.
I can't wrong the other side. I will also simply note, sir, that contrary to what you've heard this evening, the Earth Removal Board received a complaint, then scheduled a Saturday morning inspection of the three permitted sites that are operating within their permits with an independent engineer allowed on our property with our complete acceptance, engineer from Margaret Sheehan, who participated in those inspections. Those inspections found that we were in the works. Projects underway are not complete by their very definition, sir. We are operating within our permit. I'm happy to meet with anyone who is willing to work in good faith.
Thank you. I know there's a lot to be said on the merits of this case, but I know we keep slipping in that direction. And I need to keep us focused on the jurisdictional issue. For those of you who do not understand the word jurisdiction, it means the authority to hear a case, it's the power to hear a case. That's all jurisdiction means. And we've identified a couple of issues, even before we reached out to town council, I identified some issues on the procedural or jurisdictional end. And so that's something that we're going to have to consider if we're compelled to come to a decision on how or if at all to proceed with this. So in the interim, what I would like to suggest with input from the board members is a continuance of this hearing to allow for, hopefully, productive and constructive conversations to occur. I know that this has to be constructive on both sides. That's all I'm asking. If you come back and report that that's not workable, that we can't get to an agreement, then we will make that agreement. Ms. Sheehan, we will not duck this. If you think that a jurisdictional or procedural issue is ducking, you should know better. You and I are both attorneys. We know that the jurisdictional issue is first. Thank you. Let me ask you, ladies and gentlemen, who would like to approach and have a few words? I observed that it's getting late, but I'm prepared certainly to listen to whoever would like to be heard for a brief minute or two, each of you. Would anybody like to be heard? There's a lot of people here, and we'll try to get to as many as would like to speak. If anybody would like to speak. Don't everybody come up at once? Yes, ma'am?
Thank you for letting me speak.
Bring that nice and close to the speaker.
Thank you for letting me speak. My name is Cheryl Heller. I'm the president and founder of the Southeastern Massachusetts Pine Barrens Alliance.
Thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you. You might think that I'm 100% environmentalist and I could maybe against A.D. Makepeace, but I'll tell you that our group has received funding for BAT research and other projects from A.D. Makepeace when they were doing their neighborhood fund. So I am very interested in this. My-- maybe I don't quite understand the jurisdictional issue, but I know that Ms. Sheehan and the Save the Pine Barrens group had a presentation to make, which we didn't get to hear. And I just-- I know it's brief, and it's going to be a five-minute presentation with some comments after. And I don't understand why this board can't hear that presentation and let A.D. Makepeace respond to that while we're here.
Okay, well, we're not saying that we won't listen to it or can't hear it because there are procedural or jurisdictional issues. What I'm saying right now is I'd like to hear from you folks. And then because of the time, we may have to come back at that at our next meeting.
Because I really would like to hear their presentation. Thank you.
Thanks for coming tonight. Who else would like to be heard? Yes, sir?
Thank you. My name is Frank Mann. I'm the vice president of the Southeastern Massachusetts Pine Barrens Alliance.
Thanks for coming tonight.
Thank you. I'm here as reflected in Mr. Casey's comments because the vast majority of people still, despite the work that we do to build alliances and to educate people about the pine barrens, most people don't know about it. But Carver is in the heart of this globally rare eco-region. It should be something that everyone in this community is working to protect, is aware of, and understands the value of. As Ms. Sheehan was talking about, it has many things. It contributes to the quality of life, not only the protection of the aquifer, but the protection of rare species. There are over 200 rare species, a plant and animal, in this eco-region. And that contributes directly to the quality of our air, the quality of our ground, and the flowers that grow and the birds that we have. And once you start stripping these things away for temporary financial gain, you do great permanent damage. And that's why we're here. We're generally not involved in these issues jurisdictional or not. We're generally trying to build alliances with other groups. We work with Mass Audubon. We work with Manomet. We work with Wyland's Trust. We actually just want a municipal vulnerability-preparedness grant through the town of Plymouth, but mainly funded-- mainly organized by environmental groups in Plymouth. So again, that's why I'm here. I think that whether or not there are jurisdictional issues that prevent you from fully debating this issue and the legalities involved, that more needs to be done in this community and every community to understand the value of the pine barrens and how critical it is to protecting your quality of life, your way of life. The cranberries wouldn't be growing in Carver if it wasn't for the streams that were here initially. Essentially, you're strangling the vine that grew Cranberry Town, USA. Thank you.
I think I could speak for everybody on this board that we understand how critical this area is, this pine barrens area is. Again, we've read through all the paperwork. We get it. But we are compelled to follow the law. So as sympathetic as we might be on some of the issues that we have slipped into, some of the merit issues tonight, where we're putting-- by doing the cart before the horse, I would suggest. But we get it. But we can't make decisions based upon our own personal views or our own biases and sympathies. That's not what we do. We identify the law that is applicable. We apply it to the facts. And we follow wherever that takes us. Who else would like to be heard?
I want to say it'll take more than five minutes.
No, we can't do that. But if you could go up to the microphone and maybe give us your best two minutes, that would be wonderful. Bring that microphone up nice and close so we can all hear you.
My name is South Calhoun. I'm on Fremont Street in South Calhoun. And I'm also a previous employee of A.D. Makepeace Company.
Thanks for coming tonight.
I maintain that when the Pine Barrens people attack Makepeace Company, they are attacking a company that has done more and given up more for the environment than any other organization or company in this area has done. I'd like to start with-- let's look at Cape Cod, this is possible property. The Makepeace family owns Sandy Knick in the early 1900s. And due to the fact that the state was threatened to make an eminent domain of that property, it decided to sell it. And they didn't get much money for it. I think it was something like $79,000. And that property is six miles long, bordering on Cape Cod Bay. It's partly in basketball, partly in sandwich. And the bottom of the sandwich was finally sold around 1960. And for that, I think they got like 2,500 dollars or something. What do you think that property is worth today? Now, also, when I started to work for the Makepeace Company in 1950, they had over 600 acres of cranberry bog on Cape Cod.
1950?
1950.
You still working for them?
No, I've retired.
I hope you got a nice pension.
I should. But at that time, they had over 600 acres on Cape Cod. And because of our mentalism and the rapid growth of housing on the Cape Cod building, they had to get out of there. It was very hard to run that business, the WAM especially. And so I looked at aerial photos on Google the other day, and those cranberry bogs that Makepeace sold out. You couldn't even tell if they ever were cranberry bogs. Now, they're all grown up. You couldn't even tell if they ever were cranberry bogs now, they're all grown up. Now, at the same time that the Makepeace Company, the Makepeace family got rid of the Sandy Net property and, and the cranberry bogs, they also sold 1,600 acres in the town of Middleboro to conversation to the state, that today is known as the Rocky Gator Wildlife Management Area. And they got something like $800 an acre for that. I'm very, well, quite over the property because I opened some of the eyes up before it sold. Now, across Pine Street from that reserve, you have the Rodden Guncock, their vision came from Wayans. They were situated in a townlet village in Wayans, but they, the members of the Guncock decided that they wanted their own property. So the Makepeace Company sold them a large tract of land on the other side, and that's where they have their, a clubhouse today.
So I think we get the point that you're making.
Okay.
I know you probably have, have a dozen other examples.
I can go on for half an hour for real.
No, no. I think everybody would be cross with you if you went on for half an hour, or cross with me for letting you. But thank you for your contributions.
Okay.
Thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you very much.
And are you, you're retired now, are you?
Yes.
Happy retirement.
I like to limit the caliber, I like to start a score here. I always look at you.
Thank you. Who else? Anybody from that side of it? Anybody from this side of it? Anybody straight ahead? Nobody?
Okay.
Counsel, you good?
Yes, I am. The reason these people are deferring... Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, the reason that these folks are declining to comment at this time is they are really trying to keep this on the jurisdictional level as opposed to in their town.
Tired, they don't want you, they want to-
And they're tired, as I am. Thank you.
Okay. So I think there has been a promise of sorts made that counsel on each side of the equation and appropriate people from Makepeace should have some conversations that may or may not yield some productive developments, but let's see where that goes. I'm not inclined to have this board make any decisions tonight about jurisdiction or procedure. I think those issues have been well discussed already, and we need not go down that road again now at this time. But if those discussions that I just referenced do not bear fruit, then this board will make a decision, at least on the procedural or jurisdictional issue, which is where we start with all these cases. Mr. Barrington's nodding his head, so that's, that's good to see. Our next meeting is October 26th, which gives you folks on both sides of this issue a good solid month to have some conversations that hopefully will yield some positive developments and less acrimony and less frustration on the part of Save the Pine Barrens. That frustration, at least for me, comes through loud and clear. So let's see what we can do, folks. And if we can do, great. If we can't, we will proceed. Anybody? Do we have anyone in business? Yeah, we hope to continue this to October 26th. Don't move.
Thank you.
Go on, pick.
Bye.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.